Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for May 8th, 2017, to order. Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Davis and Willis.
Here.
Ms. Beans.
Here.
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Walton.
Here.
Mrs. Pascal.
Here.
Ms. Jackson, here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First thing on our agenda are announcements. Do we have any announcements? All right, Ms. Jackson.
Ross. A reminder that boundary waiver applications are due Friday, May 12th. Boundary waivers allows a student residing anywhere within Peoria Public Schools' boundaries to apply for attendance to any other school within the district, provided the school host his or her grade level. High school students, with the exception of those applying and interviewing for our JROTC program, are not eligible for boundary waivers. Boundary waiver placement is a privilege, and therefore, discipline and attendance are taken into consideration for placement and renewal each year. Let me say that again. Boundary waiver placement is a privilege, and therefore, discipline and attendance are taken into consideration for placement and renewal each year. District bus transportation is not available for boundary waiver placements. You can access the application and more information about the process by visiting www.poria publicschools.org/choice.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Warzer.
The Peoria Public Schools Annual Courageous Pacers Event, Wednesday, May 10th, 10:00 a.m., at Constitution Garden on the Peoria Riverfront, will celebrate 500 students who have walked 100 miles and lifted 10,000 pounds during the 2016-2017 school year. Students representing Charter Oak Primary School, Glen Oak Community Learning Center, Jamison School, Keller Primary School, Lindbergh Middle School, Manuel Academy, Peoria High School, the Developmental Center of Rolling Acres Middle School, Richwoods High School, and Woodrow Wilson Primary School will participate in the Courageous Pacers event. Following the walk, students will enjoy games and a picnic lunch. In case of rain, the event will take place on Thursday, May 11th, at 10:00 a.m.
Other announcements? Ms. Constance.
Thank you. Good evening. The preparatory school for the arts at Peoria High School dance showcase will be on Wednesday, May 10th, at 7:00 p.m. at Peoria High School. Over the next two weeks, numerous Peoria Public Schools will be performing at the Gerald Imbroke Art Arts in Education Spring Celebration, being held at the Peoria County Courthouse. The schools' dates and times are listed on the website calendar. Take the time to support our student performers. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation will host an appreciation reception on Thursday, May 11th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Woodruff Career and Technical Center. This annual event gives the PPS Foundation a chance to thank its board members, Horizon Club volunteers, adopted school volunteers, and donors. To RSVP, contact Cindy Morris at (309) 713-3608.
Thank you. Back to Bob.
Good evening, everyone. Well, it's hard to believe that we are approaching the end of another school year. No, it's not hard to believe. I think a lot of people are still doing a sigh of relief. But the Peoria High Schools will hold graduation on Saturday, May 20th, at Bradley University's Renaissance Coliseum. Okay, so this is Saturday, May 20th. Richwoods High School graduation will be at 10:00. Peoria High School graduation will be at 3:00. And Manuel Academy graduation will be at 7:00. And again, those are all Saturday, May 20th. Now, the doors will open one hour prior to the ceremony. Tickets are not required. Parking will be available in the parking garage or in any lot on campus. The last day of school for our students is scheduled for Thursday, May 25th, with one hour early dismissal.
Thank you. Other announcements? All right. Our community contribution? Mr. Adler?
So, at our next board meeting, we will return to recognizing our high school alumni associations. But tonight, we wanted to showcase two partners that have recently teamed up with us for different events. Tonight's Community Contribution Award recognizes Links Incorporated Central Illinois Chapter for sponsoring the field trip for 400 students to see Hidden Figures at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. The Links Incorporated is an international public service organization of 14,000 women of color. In addition to the Riverfront Museum field trip, members of the Links have recently been involved with Girls Light the Way and the Peoria Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority with a financial literacy event for 49 girls at Manuel Academy. I would like to invite Dr. Jenkins to the podium to announce the members that are present tonight, and Dr. Karat will meet you at the podium to give you a small token of our appreciation.
Good evening and welcome. We want to welcome our Links members that are here with us tonight. It was our privilege to work with them in this event, so thank you again for being able to provide this for our students here in the district. We invited our middle school students to come and also our high school students. So, out of that, we ended up with close to 400 students able to participate, to actually see the movie, to have a conversation about the movie, and then to reflect on it. And we're working on still getting those books out to people so that they can go back and read the information for themselves and enjoy it through the book format. So, we're all about the fine arts and making sure that we give students an understanding around curriculum in various ways, and this was a wonderful way to represent women empowerment and to show how history really provided for women. So, we want to thank you for being here tonight. We have many members of the organization tonight. We'd like to invite Angela Davenport, the president, to come on up. Robin Stewart, Jennifer, you guys start coming on up here, and I'm going to let you guys take it away. And I appreciate the information that was given to us about Links. So, if you have anything else that you'd like to share, please do so at this time.
Thank you, everyone, for this honor. Again, my name is Angela Allen. On behalf of the Central Illinois Chapter of the Links Incorporated, I am honored to be here and accept this award. Before I give you an overview of our organization as a whole, I want to acknowledge the chapter members who reside in the Peoria area. Not all of the women can join us tonight, but I want to make sure that they are acknowledged this evening. With me, I have Dr. Krista Spacebell, Robin Richardson-Stewart, Dawn Jeffries, who could not be with us, Ms. Shalonda Knox, Jennifer Hawkins, Jennifer Myers, Kim Dickerson, who could not join us, Dr. Trefina Lockhart, Dr. Timby Connor Garcia, and Dr. Joslyn Hazelwood. Through the hard work of these women, the Central Illinois Chapter's chain of friendship and community has expanded and continues to grow. Thank you again for this honor. I want to give you a few other points about the organization. Like I said before, we are an international organization founded in 1946. More specifically, the Central Illinois Chapter has provided transformational programming to the communities we serve since 1975. Our community service area includes the Bloomington-Normal area, Peoria, Decatur, Springfield, Champaign, and Charleston. The 34 women in our chapter contributed more than 30,724 community service hours in the 2016-2017 programming year. Our mission is based on friendship and service and is carried out through our award-winning and highly touted programming. We do our programming through our five facets. That is the arts, national trends and services, international trends and services, services to youth, and health and human services. This year, our chapter awarded $15,000 in scholarships to graduating seniors from the Bloomington-Normal, Decatur, and Peoria communities during our T-Scholarship Award and fundraising event. Lastly, we sponsor two signature programs. Petals, which is Providing Education to Achieve Lasting Success, and Taking Steps, a screening, testing, education program for breast cancer education and health awareness. Through Petals, we target at-risk teenage girls, while Taking Steps targets underserved women of color. Again, thank you for your time this evening, and we are honored to receive this award.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Peoria Public Schools, board, staff, and students, you're amazing role models for young people, and it really does take an entire village. I had the opportunity to go down to the museum and participated, and I was really transformed and thought, this was just so awesome, this opportunity. So, thank you, and we would love for you to continue to collaborate with us. Our kids really look forward to working with you. And so, do you promise that you...
And this we promise.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Any comments from any other board members?
So, I'd just like to thank, again, the volunteers from Links Incorporated for your support. Tonight, we'd also like to recognize the Peoria Riverfront Museum. This year, we have partnered with the museum for several events, including our parent university in April, where approximately 400 parents and students got full access to the museum. But we're even more excited about our upcoming opportunities. Even though the museum's new CEO is not able to join us tonight due to a work trip out of town, we're happy to introduce you to Mr. John Morris. Mr. Morris has high hopes of creating what he calls "the best public school and museum partnership in the country." We're going to play a short video, and then several museum board members are here to share some more. And so, after the valley, we would like Sid and Sally to and others to come to the podium and introduce yourselves.
Hello and greetings from the Peoria Riverfront Museum. I'm John Morris, the new president and CEO of our museum. I'm excited to start this new work with a board of directors who cares deeply about inspiring our culture of learning, innovation, and entrepreneurial activity throughout our community. I have spent 25 years of my life in educational institutions, from my beginnings at Lakeview Museum of Arts and Sciences, the predecessor of museums, the Peoria Riverfront Museum, from my work in public media, PBS station WTVB, and from nearly a decade with Eureka College. All these experiences lead me to this, to humbly accept and become the new leader for this extraordinary team of staff, volunteers, and members here at Peoria Riverfront Museum. We truly have one of the finest multidisciplinary community museums in the nation. And working together with your continued support, we will reach new heights. We will bring exciting new temporary exhibitions. We will expand our permanent collection. We will do more educational programs. We will do more with our Dome Planetarium and our Giant Screen Theater and our summer camps and our special events and so much more. But in all of these things, we will keep our focus on the one reason the museum exists: people. We are here to help unleash the full talent and genius of every single person. And we want your involvement, not just to visit the museum for exhibitions and programs, but we want a relationship with you. We want you to look to us as your source of inspiration for lifelong learning and for pride and confidence in this, the greatest part of our great nation, Peoria, Illinois, and all of the surrounding communities that we are so proud to serve at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. Thank you for the adventure that we begin together as I begin my work as your dear president and CEO. Thank you.
My name is Sid Ruckregel, and I chair the board of the Peoria Riverfront Museum. And with me today are our director of programming and lead curator, Ann Schmidt. And have I lost Sally?
She's right behind me.
And our museum is set really with a mission where art, science, history, and achievement come together. And what makes it so wonderful, I think, in the facility that we have is we've got a multidisciplinary facility which, when used correctly, can spark conversation, education, and that lifelong love of trying to ask the question, why or what more? And as I walked in the night of Parent University, I could hear the conversation and the laughter coming from the various rooms, and that was exactly why that museum was created, to have that conversation, to have that laughter, and to be that community aspect where that next question can be answered. We are so proud, the board, the staff, and all of the museum sponsors, to be able to be a partner with the school district in our endeavors so far and our future endeavors to come. And I will say, just as a little prelim, that I think we've got some great news that not too far from now, at some point, we may be announcing, but we look forward to many years of great partnership. And so, to just fill you in about one more piece of that partnership is Ann Schmidt.
Thank you, Sid. Oh, good evening, everybody. As Sid said, I am Ann Schmidt. I'm the head of programs and lead curator. And John Morris, our new CEO, whom you all met virtually, asked me to come tonight because he is at the American Alliance of Museums Conference in St. Louis. And I just wanted to remark on what a great experience we've always had working with Peoria School District. Last year, we had all of the fourth graders come to the museum with a NASA grant, and the same students were able to come back this year. Actually, we're just in the midst of hosting all of the fifth grade students. The National Institute of Health Foundation gave us funding to bring all the fifth graders to the museum to see the Genome Exhibition, all of the other exhibitions, do a workshop on genome, gene sequencing, and visit the Planetarium or the Giant Screen Theater. So, we are hoping, and this is John's hope and my hope, Sid's hope, Sally, the rest of the board, to strengthen that partnership and work further in the future with the students from Peoria School District. So, thank you, and I hope everybody enjoys the rest of the school year.
Thank you.
I am just a board member, but at one point, I sat where you all were sitting. For 10 years, I sat. And I want to say a very big compliment to all of you for the wonderful job you're doing. I think you have an absolutely incredible leader. I am a major Dr. Karat fan, a major Mrs. Ross fan. I've worked with both of them now. Martha's had to put up with me for a long time. So, anyway, I'm thrilled to do it. And we at the museum, this is a most important partnership, and it's a personal mission of mine. I just absolutely care so much that Peoria Public Schools... And see, I got it right. I'm working very hard on not being District 150. But anyway, Peoria Public Schools and the Peoria Riverfront Museum are collaborating for all kinds of programs that can enrich the lives of the students that are our future. And so, I thank you all for what you're doing and the work we can do together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And board and the public, this relationship, it's not free at all. It's actually very expensive. And the impressive thing about Sally and Sid, they're working very, very hard to get donors and sponsors to pick up the expense so that all the kids can go through the museum and not have to worry about the fee. And so, that's pretty amazing. And when our kids go through, they enjoy it, they love the Planetarium, they love the Dome. I was able to watch the Hidden Figures. I'm just was really impressed. It's an amazing facility, and we would like every one of all Peoria Public Schools students to go through multiple times. So, thank you for your hard work and your vision. And you said, hey, we've built this, and we've built it for the kids. And we want the kids to come through and enjoy and question and just hopefully find their niche. And so, we wanted to thank you for your vision and your support and your leadership. And we've only just begun, right? So, we have a small token of appreciation for Peoria.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from anyone? Dr. Bob?
Two of my favorite places in the world are libraries and museums. And our museum, our gem, is absolutely remarkable. And I'd like to say that whenever Peg, my wife, and I have guests from out of town, we never have to worry about where we want to go first. We go to the museum because it's such a special place. So, thank you.
Kiwanis Teacher of the Year?
Yes. Thank you, President Ross. Just exciting news. On Wednesday, November 26th, the Kiwanis Club of Peoria held its School Teacher of the Year Award at Golden Corral. At that time, they recognized several educators in the category of outstanding educators. And this is in collaboration with Peoria Federation of Teachers. So, it's called Peoria Federation of Teachers Kiwanis Teacher of the Year Award. And so, beginning in 2003, the Kiwanis Club of Peoria and the Peoria Teachers' Federation joined forces to really honor not only elementary teachers, but also middle school teachers and high school teachers. And the Peoria Federation of Teachers has underwritten this project since its very, very beginning. So, Mr. McCaw and myself of Peoria Federation of Teachers and I gave congratulatory remarks during the program. But we also wanted to, I wanted to recognize them, the outstanding educators this evening at our board meeting. And it just so happened, actually, this week, May 8th through May 12th, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And I sent out a note early this morning just saying how much we appreciate them. It takes a big heart to shape, you know, small minds and how much we appreciate their hard work and dedication. They're on the front lines, and they have the tough work to do. So, we were able to recognize, actually, four, I think, four and four, eight, actually, eight teachers. Some of them are here and some of them are not here. And I've summarized to kind of keep it short. But let's see. So, middle school, for the middle school category, four teachers we recognized, and I believe one is here. But the teachers are Ms. Bowers from Roosevelt, Ms. Cobb from Harrison, Ms. Bali from Rolling Acres, and Ms. Kennel from Washington Gifted. I know Ms. Laura Bali is here today. Ms. Laura, are you here?
Hi.
Hi. Why don't you come up, please? I would like you to make a few remarks and let everybody see your beautiful face. Congratulations. And we're really, really proud of you. Outstanding Teacher of the Year, Rolling Acres.
Thank you.
Mr. Barbara, please stand. You may want to come up and just give us some support, too. Amazing. And I know firsthand she's amazing also because for state of the school, she, with her class, they did the centerpieces. Board members remember that. And she came in late and was just working really hard, getting those tables nicely decorated. So, this doesn't have anything to do with that, but I remember that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Karat. I can speak on behalf of all the teachers that we love working with students and we love being in the classroom. And our heart is with Peoria Public Schools, and we just, we're there every day for them. And what we do is all for them, and we're all very honored for this award and this recognition. So, thank you very much. It's a privilege to serve for you. Thanks.
Well deserved. Ms. Bee? You know her. You work with her every day.
I do. I've had the privilege of working with Mrs. Bali for eight years at two different schools. So, I was able to bring her from Irving to Rolling Acres. And Laura Bali does so much more than just teach art at Rolling Acres. She's the lead of our PBIS team. The bulletin board's behind you for Parent University, that's Laura Bali. About three years ago, Mrs. Bali came to me and talked about SEL and how she felt like our kids needed SEL. And so, we started planning our SIP days for team building and doing SEL activities. That's Laura Bali. So, there's so many things that she does other than just art. She's a great team player. She works very hard for the district, very hard for Rolling Acres, but really, she works for kids. And in the words of my mentor, Michael Uzi, when we make decisions, she really follows what he always followed, which was, what are we here for? And we're here for kids. And that's really what she does. So, it's really an honor to have her at Rolling Acres and earn this award. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Congratulations, Ms. Bali. At the primary level, there are four teachers, Ms. Garmin from Valeska Hinton, Ms. Poles from Jamison, Ms. Vitale from Keller, and Patricia Zombro from Glen Oak. And we actually have three teachers present today. Ms. Garmin? Are you here, Ms. Garmin? Come on up, please. Ms. Garmin, come on up. And Ms. P., Ms. Poles, come on up. Come up, please. And Ms. Zombro from Glen Oak. So, Valeska Hinton, Jamison, and Glen Oak are present. Ms. Garmin, please make a few comments. Congratulations. We're proud of you, very, very proud of you.
Thank you. It's truly an honor and a privilege. I've been working with Peoria Public Schools for over 10 years. I love what I do. I appreciate the support that I get at Valeska. So, I just want to thank you for the award and the honor. So, thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations. Ms. Poles, Jamison, congratulations on the outstanding award.
Thank you. I also would like to say thanks for all the support from the board members, as well as my principal, who currently is on maternity leave. And again, this award really has everything to do with the students. The students that I work with are so heartwarming and so loving. Special need students are quite a challenge at times, but the honors and the achievements that you see them do is definitely worth everything. So, this award was quite surprising for me, but I'm very honored. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Ms. Poles. Ms. Vitale made it from Keller. Congratulations. Come on up, please, and we're happy you were able to make it.
Thank you very much. And I was very honored for this award. And I have a great team of third-grade teachers at Keller and all the teachers at Keller that support the education of our children going through the school. And we have a very strong leader that also supports us and has the highest standards for all of our students and for the teachers. So, I'm thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patricia Zombro from Glen Oak, welcome and congratulations.
I want to say thank you to Kiwanis for offering this honor and this award, and to my principal and my peers who chose, because we were chosen by our peers also. So, it's just an honor, and I was really, really surprised when I received the email. And I don't know what to say. I just, I'm not used to being in front. I like to be with my children. So, just thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I see principals. I know Mr. Turner. Can you make a few remarks quickly, please? I mean, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, you know what? So, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross and board, we'll take that extra time to recognize our teachers. Can you make a quick, few remarks quickly, please? I mean, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, you know what? So, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross and Board, we'll take that extra time to recognize our teachers. It's their week.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I'll be very brief, like you said.
Principals can do that.
All of these teachers, I've worked with a few of them, they're all excellent teachers. We are blessed in this district and to have the highest level of professionalism. And these teachers are dedicated. And Karen Vitale is very deserving at Keller. She works like crazy for her kids and for her team. And she even shares with teachers from other schools. She works so hard. So, congratulations, Karen.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Thank you, teachers. Do we have any, is the principal from Glen Oak here? No? Okay. I know we have one of our middle school Teacher of the Year, outstanding teachers, actually. Ms. Cobb, are you here? Did you, were you able to sneak in? Please, awesome. Come on and make some remarks, please. Let everybody see who you are. Congratulations on being Kiwanis Teacher of the Year.
I'm so nervous. I just want to say thank you for the award, for the recognition. Thank you to my awesome principal. When I bought her the vision of the after-school program, she just gave me the go-ahead, and it is remarkable. And just, just thank you.
Thank you. So, how's that program working at Harrison? Can you tell them a little bit about?
Well, I got paint on my clothes.
It's an after-school program?
Yes. And it's Monday through Thursday, 3:30 to 5:00.
And you told your principal there was a need.
We needed, yes. Because our Boys and Girls Club had been closed for like the past couple of years, and we didn't have any after-school programs, you know, with budget cuts and whatnot. So, I just knew the students needed something to do after school.
Amazing. Ms. Daniels, are you here? Can you please make some comments? I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Tell them what you told us at Kiwanis at the celebration at Golden Corral.
That we're the pride of the South Side. Other than that, good evening, everyone. When Mrs. Cobb came to me with the vision, because of course, on the South Side, many of our students do not have activities to do, to make sure they had productive after-school activities, Mrs. Cobb came up with a vision to have students involved with cooking, arts and craft, but also further their education by having Homework Club. So, I saw the vision and I let her run with it. And ever since we started in September, the students have been engaged in learning. Also, the ladies that were here from Link have came down. Dawn Jeffries have came and volunteered yoga, cooking. We have Bradley Women's Basketball that come down and volunteer. So, Mrs. Cobb have made that community outreach to come to our building to make sure that our students are engaged in learning activities. And they're very excited. So, thank you for the opportunity for that. And as I said, Harrison is the pride of the South Side, and our students are learning and being engaged in activities after school. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you to both. And we have one final group, and it's the 2017 winners of the Russell and Gordon Peters Kiwanis Club of Peoria Outstanding High School Teacher of the Year Award. And there were three high school teachers, one from Peoria High, one from Manuel, and one from Richwoods. Manuel, Ms. Daly, Belinda Daly, received that outstanding recognition. And Peoria High's teacher, Ms. Rhonda Smith, received that outstanding recognition. And Richwoods High School teacher, Mr. Thomas Hayes, received that outstanding recognition. So, both teachers, Mrs. Daly is here and Ms. Smith is here. So, Ms. Daly, why don't you go first? Manuel, High School, congratulations.
Thank you. First thing that I want to say is, when I look at the teachers from elementary and from middle school, and I know how hard they're working, I know my job is going to be a lot easier. This is all about our kids. So, when I hear about your program and your kids are coming to me, I am so excited because I do a lot of after-school programs with my kids as well, like Medical Enrichment and our Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers and Engineering Club that runs the entire year. And this honestly is, it's about building relationships with kids. And I think when the kids see that you love them, you care about them, and they can trust you, that's when you get their minds going. And that's when you get them asking all those questions and wanting to get involved. And I'm lucky because I get to do science. So, we have fun every day. So, it was an honor to get this award. I was shocked because I think most of us don't look for recognition. We do what we do because we love it. So, thank you very much. And thanks for recognizing us here as well. Thank you.
Congratulations. I piggyback on her. Ms. Rhonda Smith is from Peoria High. Welcome and congratulations, Ms. Smith. We're proud of you.
Thank you. Thanks to the school board for inviting us. Like everyone said, we're very honored. It's all about the kids. We're here for the kids. And, you know, the teachers at Peoria High School, we got some great teachers at Peoria High. And to receive this award, I'm very honored. Wonderful teachers that are above the line. So, I'm grateful. And I see Tom Welsh. He hired me into the district, so 17 years ago.
Oh, wow.
So, and very proud of teaching at my school where I graduated from back in 1990. So, I'm back, and I've been there for 12 years. And again, we're very honored, and it's for the kids. The kids, that's why we do this every day. It's all about the kids.
Do we have anyone from Manuel or Peoria High? Dr. Coleman? Don't hi. She's not as shy as she looks.
On behalf of my colleagues who couldn't be here, Heather Young and Brett Elliott, I would like to say how much we appreciate our teachers and all the things that they have done. Many of the middle school and primary school teachers I have worked with, so again, this has been echoed several times, but I just want to say, we do have amazing teachers in District 150, Peoria Public Schools. I am a product of Peoria Public Schools, and I wear that badge proudly. I also am an alumni of Peoria High School, so I wear that very proudly as well. So, again, thank you to the, I send my children, also, I want to mention that, I send my children to Peoria Public Schools. So, again, we have amazing teachers and very proud of them and everything that they have accomplished.
Yep. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I think an overarching theme with the individuals who were recognized here today that I picked up is that what we call teacher efficacy, where they believe they can make a difference, and they're going to do whatever they can to move student achievement from point A to point B, to make sure that their kids are being successful and preparing them to realize that this Peoria Public Schools' vision regarding educating, graduating, preparing, and inspiring our young people to contribute to the world of work. So, those individuals that were just recognized, again, I love that, you know, that strength and that conviction about, that lotus of control about, I can do this and I'm going to do this. And that's amazing, and that's a good quality to have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Karat. Student recognition.
I have just a question.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Sure.
I can't let this moment go. Mr. Walther and I have had the honor of visiting some of the teachers you just saw in front of you. I had the chance, without Mr. Walters, to bring a class of my students who were doing an online master's program over to Rolling Acres, who very graciously gave us time in the summer when they were preparing. I got a chance to see Mrs. Bali's classroom. And so, I got a chance to see where the magic works. I'm thrilled for every teacher. I'm especially thrilled that we have an art teacher who's won this award because our teachers in the arts and in music are so, so important to us, and we should, like all teachers, respect them greatly. Mr. Holland was right, because without the arts, they'd have nothing to read and write about. Who was our teacher from Jamison?
Ms. Poles. Poles.
Poles. Are you still here?
Oh, Ms. P.
Hey, how are you? Didn't we visit your classroom?
Yes, you did.
Again, right? Mr. Walther? We saw where the magic was happening. Ms. Cobb? There you are. We were over, we saw you, too. So, I guess what I want to say is that I'm really pleased that we're able to recognize our Teachers of the Year. But you ought to get out there and go take a look at where it's actually happening. And you will never, ever, ever again doubt the efficacy of our teachers and how great and special they are. Thank you so much for all the work you do.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Jackson?
I think that for many, many years, the Peoria Public Schools have sold our teachers short. We have some amazing teachers that think outside the box and do what they need to do every day. And I think you go above and beyond anything that we would ever expect from our teachers. I've always known that, because I went to public school in Peoria, and my children went to public school, my grandchildren go to public schools. And I meet teachers all the time when I was always in the school with my kids. And I want you to know that I appreciate you, and I'm sure that everybody sitting around this table appreciate you, because you make us proud. You also make us look good. Thanks.
So, I want to also thank the PFT and Kiwanis for making this possible. Any other comments? Thank you. And now, we move on to student recognition.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tonight, we have two student recognitions to present. The first goes to Mark Bills Middle School, eighth-grade student Samantha Benegas. Is she here? Okay. Samantha, Mr. Laird. She won the Barnes and Noble My Favorite Teacher Contest with her essay on teacher Andrew Laird. Samantha and Mr. Laird were honored at a reception at Barnes and Noble in Peoria and appeared on the Living Well Show on WNBD. Samantha's essay notes that Mr. Laird gives challenging work, but also helps students work out problems and incorporates life lessons and his own personal experiences in discussions. She also says Mr. Laird shows respect toward others and never puts anyone down. Our second recognition award goes to the top scorers of the PFT K-8 Chess Tournament held at Peoria High School. Peoria High was happy to host the PFT Chess Tournament on Saturday, April 29. 63 students participated. Thank you to Brian Devine for managing the event. We would also like to thank John Lucas, PHS teacher, and Tracy Zeganhorn, RHS teacher, for assisting. The day went very well. I would like to invite Mr. Lucas and Mr. Atkins to show up to announce the winners and recognize each student.
Okay, can, we have principals and chess coaches, if they're here, stand up so we Okay, so, we promised the parents and the chess winners that they would be in and out of here five minutes at the tournament. So, today, you got a little bonus to see all of the remarkable other people that you're with, that you're working with in this district. So, that's good. So, I'm going to call up the winners one at a time now. Unfortunately, I'm going to let you take a picture with this trophy. The parents can come down here to take their shot. And I'm going to have to take it right back from you, because there's a mistake on all of them that we need to get fixed. So, we have two first-grade competitors, and they both tied for first place, for first grade. The first one is Jack Hapke from Keller. Come on up. Oh, you have a medal? Didn't know you had a medal. Here you go. All right, so let's put the medals on before the pictures. All right, second first-grade winner is John Henley from Charter Oak. Second-grade first-place winner, Mitchell Wanger from Charter Oak. All right, third-grade first-place winner, Agreene Negra from Charter Oak. All right, fourth-grade first-place winner, Jose Rodriguez from Heinz. Fifth-place, or fifth-grade first-place winner, Benjamin Otterstrom from Glen Oak. Sixth-grade first-place winner, Antruk from Lindberg. Seventh-grade first-place winner from Lindberg, Olivia Grant. All right, and eighth-grade first-place winner from Calvin Coolidge, Trinity Evans.
And again, let's give a round of applause for those students and their accomplishments.
All the winners, parents to stand, if you're still here. Thank you. And also, the principals of each, one, I noticed that one principal went out. Do you have it?
On his hand.
Yeah, okay. Principals of the winners, would you please stand and wave? Any other principals?
Mark Bills, Ms. Rogers, Mr. Turner, Ms. Lepowski.
Thank you. And what about teachers? Are any of the teachers here? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, thank you all for all that you do. And I'm sure Mr. Knapp is proud this evening. Have to thank him for actually starting the chess club. So, it's gone far wider than we ever thought it would. Okay, at this time, we have a budget presentation. Carla Eamon and Mike McKenzie.
Mr. Willis, don't take any offense to the fact that they're all leaving after she said budget presentation.
We have many ways to clear a room.
Yeah, John, you used to work for us in the accounts receivable in the accounting department at one point, so.
For some reason, he became a teacher.
I know.
He's got, stick it with us.
We have just a short presentation tonight about the budget amendment we do every year.
First, we talk about the need for an amended budget. Why do we do this? And it's the usual practice each year to present an amended budget. The reason is because our initial budget is just an adopt, is adopted as just an estimate. We don't have all our final figures, so we go ahead and do the best estimates we can and plug them in. And then, later in the year, we reevaluate and see where we are. There's going to be changes in revenue and expenditures during the year. And basically, what we want to do is align the budget to our actual expenditures.
Just the school code requires us to do certain things whenever you adopt a budget or you amend a budget. So, this week, we'll get a public notice published, which is news to Daphne, because I forgot to tell her. But we'll get that done this week. And then, we will have the... And then we will have the budget on display for 30 days. Starting tomorrow, we'll have a paper copy on the front desk, and we'll have a version on the Internet for anybody to look through. You have to have a public hearing at least 30 days after today, so that'll be scheduled on June 12th, which is our normal school board meeting on June 12th. And then on that night, we'll have a resolution to adopt the amended budget.
Okay, there's several reasons or things that lead to needing to amend the budget, and one of the primary ones is that the federal funds budgets, when we do them over the summer, that we work with estimated figures for IDEA and the different title budgets. And then over time, we get the actual allocation, which is usually just a little bit of a raise over what we started with, and then we have a little bit of carryover dollars in there. And at that time, we can amend within those budgets with the state. We put, you know, for example, more in stipends for tutors and do some rearranging there. And then at this time of year, again, we want to align those expenditures and have our overall district budget match those changes.
Another big change, especially this year, was the property tax levy. Remember, when we do the budget, we're doing it in July and August usually. June, July, August is when we're trying to estimate all these numbers. We, of course, don't know what we're going to levy in December in those months. We know, we have some idea, but we don't know for sure. Plus, we don't know what the final EAV is going to come in. So this year, it came in higher than we expected, so this budget incorporates those kind of changes. Things like general state aid and other state categoricals might change. A lot of times, we don't know those numbers exactly in August, so when we're trying to finalize the budget, so we have those more accurately. One thing to remember this year with general state aid and other state categoricals is usually you receive four categorical payments, which by this time last year, we'd received three of those payments. But right now, we've received one of those payments, so we've received a quarter of our expected categoricals. Now, we use accrual-based accounting, so on June 30th, we will recognize revenue and accounts receivable from the state. So assuming that, you know, by fall, we do get it, we'll still, it's just a cash flow of when we get it, but, which causes different problems. So this budget assumes we're going to get all of those general state aid and categorical payments eventually. Last year, we got the final payments in December and January of this year for some of those categoricals. So hopefully, we'll get them, or most likely, we'll get them, but you know, you never know with the state right now. Then the other one, CS, that's the county school facility sales tax bonds, which we're issuing here in a couple of weeks. The new budget has the revenue from those bonds that we're issuing in the capital projects budget. So that's another big item that we'll see here on the thing. I left at your place tonight a paper copy of what's going into the, on display tomorrow. The first page is just a summary page that we do just for our own use. It's not a state form or anything. It's just a form that we've developed. And then the rest of it is the state form that we have to fill out whenever we do a budget or a budget amendment. So then, the slide here that we're showing is the operating half of the budget. This is the education fund, the operation and maintenance funds, transportation, and the IRMREF, social security. So these are like the day-to-day operation, those kind of funds that we think about when we're talking about the budget. The one big thing I wanted to point out to you, just because it really substantially changed the totals, is this on-behalf payment, this $43 million. And you'll see there's both revenue of $43 million and expense for $43 million. In the amended budget, it was $24 million. So I've raised it by $19 million. So there's reason for that because in our final, they changed the way TRS reports that number to us. In the past, they just gave us a percentage. We multiplied by our teacher wages, our TRS eligible wages, and we got a number. That money does not come to us. We do not pay that money. It's just an accounting entry. There's no money that actually changes hands. This year, they changed it where TRS did an actuarial study where they figure out what the real amount you would have to pay to catch the TRS up. So it's the current amount plus the unfunded liability that the state has. So since the state is not actually paying that number to TRS, they should be, but they aren't because they haven't been paying the unfunded liability for years. It's not a real number, but it is a required number in the budget, and so that's why I raised the $43 million. The final number in last year's audit was $42 million and change. I forget exactly. I don't have it in front of me. So that's the big number. So of course, that raised the total revenues by $20 million, total expenses by $20 million. But the net result is still a small loss in revenues or in expenditures over revenue. The other thing we talk about is we do run a very conservative budget here. These are revenues I expect to spend, and these are expenses we expect to spend. We don't try to pad anything. We try to get it as close as possible. But the original budget had the loss here of $4.4 million, and right now, we're estimating closer to $3.4 million. So things have improved because of property taxes, more property taxes, things like that. The other page, the other half of that front page that we put on the budget, is the non-operating budgets, debt service, capital projects, working cash, tort, and late safety. There are specific budgets that have to be used for certain things. The big thing that has changed is this bond issue in capital projects where we're issuing $29 million worth of bonds for the county school facility sales tax or to be paid back with those county school facility sales tax. And then, most of the rest is pretty much exactly what we had done in the previous budget in the non-operating funds. And really, that's all I really prepared. We don't want to drive everybody out of the room, so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer anything.
Questions?
Mr. McKenzie, do you have an approximate split on the, in terms of the million-dollar upside, you know, percentage-wise? Was that mostly property tax benefit, higher EAV?
I do not have it with me. The property tax increase was like, I thought, like $350,000 or something like that across the various different funds. I have a spreadsheet for it, of course, because that's what I do. But the rest, I'd have to, some of it's, the wages are coming in a little higher than we expected because of the new contract, but benefits are coming in a little less than I had budgeted. So those are some switches in there, and there are some other increases in food service budgets and donations and things like that that have helped the cause. And then, of course, those expenses in there are budgeted amounts, and of course, at the same time they're budgeted, we remind people that just because we give them a budget to spend this year, we encourage them not to spend it if they don't need it. And so, you know, we have to practice saying no, even though the budget might be there. It's not like we set money aside for that specific thing. If we don't spend it, we don't need, if we don't need to spend it, we don't need to spend it.
There's several areas within supplies, for example, that people have really tried to cut back or use their grant funding or to not spend, and that's been great and helpful.
So then hopefully, some of those supply areas and stuff will actually come in a little lower, so we'll be, but again, that's, final things will happen with some of the state funding and stuff too, so...
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the amended budget? Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have an approval of the minutes from April 24, 2017?
So moved.
Second. Please call the row.
Dr. Davidson, Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Constance.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Kevin, I'm going to prepare.
Thank you. We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for our students of Peoria Public Schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to these goals or this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment right of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting and compiling and sharing those with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person has five minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, garden, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
I finally finished my project. I have given you data for about only 60 manual grads. One from 1969, nine from the 1970s, 17 from the 1980s, 24 from the 1990s, and six from 2000 to 2007. This data is from a very limited number of grads who responded to my request on Facebook. Two earned a bachelor's, master's, and PhD. One earned a bachelor's, a master's, and a superintendent's certificate. Twelve earned a bachelor's and a master's. Thirteen earned a bachelor's at a four-year college. Eight earned a bachelor's at ICC in another college. Eight took college classes but did not earn a degree, and six qualified for a license for a particular job. In general, the current jobs of these graduates include accountants, managers, and an analyst with insurance companies, and clerical workers and secretaries in businesses, government agencies, and educational institutions. Jobs in education include a middle school principal, a community school manager, a communications director, a preschool teacher, a high school French and English teacher, elementary teachers, a college sociology instructor, adjunct college professors, a retired coordinator for a college program, coordinators and participants in various educational programs, an athletic trainer, and employees in our own schools. Government jobs include a juvenile detention officer, a deputy clerk, and a U.S. Postal Service contractor. In journalism, a digital editor for the Chicago Sun-Times, of whom I'm especially proud, magazine publishers, a podcast host, the owner of a music production studio. In the manufacturing industry, engineering and computer-related jobs, a Burlington-Santa Fei locomotive engineer, a fireman, a cosmetologist, a private music teacher, a Baptist pastor and hospital chaplain, a volunteer missionary in Kenya, a counselor for a funeral director, a director of a school of the arts, a career in the grocery business, a private teacher of piano, voice, and flute. In the health industry, an office manager and director of health services, a resolutions unlimited psychotherapist, a leader of La Leche League, and 10 nurses, two with degrees in the, I mean, with careers in the Marines, and three in the Air Force. Others served in the Navy, the Navy Reserves, the Army, and the Marines. I will do a bit of bragging in that Charcy, my cousin and manual grad, recently was chosen as the 2016 Unity Point Methodist Nurse of the Year. Her husband, also a manual grad, might well be one of the first African-Americans to receive a scholarship to and degrees in mechanical engineering and computer science from Bradley. Sadly, only 25 of these grads stayed in Peoria. 14 live in Illinois, and 25 are spread out in 15 other states. Our district would benefit greatly if you would begin such an effort for all four high schools. All that would be necessary is college and current job data. Help could come from the grads who plan class reunions. Minimal help from each school and Wisconsin Avenue could get the job done. Public schools have been irresponsible in that they seldom do anything to prove that their students have succeeded in college or in jobs. More and more, we are competing with private schools. Test scores are not convincing. How many of Peoria's past and present leaders graduated from Peoria Public Schools? How many of our own graduated from Peoria Public Schools? How many grads from the last 10 years went to college compared to grads from the previous decades, six decades? Is there a change in the career fields from one era to another? It's time to give credit to Peoria Public Schools and its graduates. Please consider this. I think it'd be a worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. May I ask you, what years were those again?
Oh, it's on the time.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, I see it now. Thank you, Mr. Terry Knapp.
Thank you. I gave you a handout tonight. If you will find that in front of you, I think it's, I think it's an important handout. It is to me. It just jumped at me. It was in the Journal-Star a couple of weeks ago, and it says, "Eureka College Partners with Quest." I'm on a few boards, served as scholarship chairman with Ms. Cruz on the part of board, and raise $3,000 a year for students at ICC for scholarships for teachers. We just recently, Bob Solaski's here, he's going to be talking to you, I hope someday, about his little project. But we gave $17,000 away the other night to District 150 students and have another $14,000 to give that we're trying to explore how to do that. We will get that done, obviously, and we continue to raise about $30,000 a year to give away. I also serve on the old-timers board, which raises $15,000 and gives that away locally to students who participate in various park district activities. In this article, it says, basically, and you can read it in the first paragraph, it says, "Formal arrangements between Quest and Eureka." Then you go down and it says, "This is just the tip of the iceberg." And you go to the next column, and it says, in the last paragraph, it says, "But the focus is on developing a pipeline from Quest to Eureka." I take exception to this. I raised two children, and I told them early on in grade school that there are various options. ICC, I think, is a tremendous option, and it's the most financially sound option one could make. State schools is a second option, as far as I'm concerned. Private schools are very valuable, and if you want to go to a private school, I told my children, "Get a job," because I'm paying for state schools or ICC. I'm not paying for state schools. I'm not paying for you to go out of state. When you go out of state, you pay $10,000 or more to go out of state to a school, and I think that's wasted money when you have fine schools in Illinois. As I looked through this article, it mentioned a scholarship that they give, and it's mentioned in this article, and I asked the newspaper person who wrote the article, she didn't know how much it was, so I called Eureka. It's $1,500 a year, one time. You can reapply. $1,500 won't pay the books, okay? I called and found out how much the tuition was at Eureka. Tuition's over $25,000. The room and board is over $10,000. So we're going to ask kids, without information, I would guess, to go to Eureka, because this is pretty much, "Go to Eureka, go to Eureka, go to Eureka." And then, when you get this $1,500 scholarship, you are obligated to come back to Quest and work at the school while you're going to school. Are you kidding me? I mean, that's not even, that's not even logical. There is no scholarship I've ever been a part of giving that was ever tied to you coming back and doing something for the giver. So I mean, it messes with my mind. It also suggests in here that you come back and get a job... It also suggests in here that you come back and get a job. Well, yeah, you can go to Quest, and you can work an eight-day-longer year, and you can work an hour-longer day, which equates to 31 more days, for less pay and less benefits. Not a good idea. I'm sorry, I used to take my kids to the computer room, and we looked for jobs in the area of science, and we studied the good-paying jobs, the less-paying jobs, and the ones you might be motivated to do, but a full spectrum was given. This article and this program is geared to one school, $35,000 a year. Doesn't make sense to me. And I would suggest that, because you're the overseer of this school, that you look into it. The other thing I'd like to commend you on is point 11 tonight on the Peoria Stadium. You've done a great job. You are going to develop a plan. Peoria should be proud of you for doing that. It's a historical landmark, and it's also a tremendous facility for the children and youth of the community, and our kids of the community are what we should be all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Ms. Hannah Offit? Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I come to you as a representative of the Safe Haven Project. We're made up of parents, teachers, students, and community members. We're Black, White, Latinx, Arab, and Asian. We're Muslim, Christian, Jewish, Hindu, and atheist. We're here because we're concerned about stances taken by our federal government in regards to documented and undocumented citizens and walls being built. We're here because it is urgent upon us to take leadership and take a stance against any policies that tear up families, promotes hatred of others, and harms our community. Our children must know that no human being is illegal. They must know that schools are a safe place for them to learn. The Safe Haven Project presents to you a policy which will guarantee that the Peoria Public Schools District 150 are a safe learning environment for immigrants and refugee students and their families. The Safe Haven Project presents, the Safe Haven Resolution would prevent any District 150 resources from being used for the purpose of detecting and detaining immigrant children and their families. It would bar Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, from entering any district property without a warrant signed by a judge and proper notification to the superintendent. This resolution will work to mitigate the negative impact of draconian immigration policies by providing counseling and referring families to local nonprofit advocacy groups. Furthermore, it would prevent district complicity in any form of registry of religious minorities or immigrant communities. More importantly, passage of this resolution would send a strong message to the immigrant and refugee community that they have a right to exist, that they have a right to a public education in a diverse learning environment, that they have a right to an equitable place in society. There are students who can't concentrate on their homework because they are afraid a member of their family may be arrested or deported. There are students who fear they themselves may be discriminated against because they are Latinx or because they wear hijab or because they worship a different god. This resolution would encourage the immigrant and refugee community to fully engage in society and relieve their fears. To those worried about the loss of federal funding, the Safe Haven Project believes this is fake news. The man who is making these comments has no understanding of the Constitution, the Tenth Amendment, or the concept of local sovereignty. Several U.S. Supreme Court decisions have held that the Tenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution prevents the federal government from commandeering local government to do its work. April 25, 2017, a federal judge placed an injunction on the current administration's executive order defunding sanctuary cities, stating it violated the Separation of Powers Clause, as well as the First, Fifth, and Tenth Amendment to the Constitution. County of Santa Clara versus Donald Trump et al., 2017. Furthermore, Peoria Public Schools receives no funding from the Department of Justice, so there is no funding to lose. While District 150 receives enormous sums of federal money from the Department of Education, the Department of Education has no legal mandate to enforce federal immigration laws. Finally, this resolution is in full compliance with state and federal statutes. Please support the Safe Haven Resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Savino Sierra.
I'm kind of glad that you're putting out bid for replacement of the doors at some of our schools. I don't know, some of yous were around when I gave the board a, what do you call it? A list of some of the doors that had to be replaced. That's been about three years ago, and I'm glad to see that you're trying to get new ones put in, especially Treewind. That's where I gave you, that's where I gave you a whole list of darn near all the doors there, and you never did take care of it. And I gave you some bad places there at Peoria High, like the lions. They were all going to pieces. Never did take care of that. But you got money to build new schools and what have you, and when a lot of our old schools are still standing and still sturdy, you know? All they would have to do was to put in more lavatories, put in more drinking fountains, and everything would be good. But you people wanted new buildings. And what I hate about it, you know, the architect isn't, there is no, you know, I hate to tell you, but to me, Harrison Holmes looks like, what do you call it? Something like, how do I say, a prison, you know what I mean? The way it's built. And to me, it doesn't have any, too much character, you know? I'm used to seeing a lot of architect wherever I go, you know what I mean? Whether it's in this country and other countries, you know? And I would, I would say you should, before you keep building new stuff, take care of the old stuff that can be repaired. And so, it really gets me, you know? I've been knowing the public schools for over 70 years. I went to parochial schools, and there, all the kids were siblings of four different countries, you know? And we got along, you know? We didn't have to go around, what do you call it? Raising cane, you know, and raising, you know, talking, what do you call it? That there's bad feelings amongst people, you know what I mean? And that, you know, we create that, and that's where it starts, and some of these people that grew up that way, they still got that, thinking that, you know? But I'm worried about our kids right now that we're educating them, and we've got to teach them brotherly love and everything else to get with the studies, not to be standing on the corners and that. And right now, they're asking for, they need nurses. They need people in the medical fields. And right now, I've talked to some of the people that are graduating, and they're talking about going into the medical field. I've got relations that are in the medical field, you know, nurses and that. So let's push on that.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra.
Yeah, and then, I'm against giving our stadium to anybody, but we'll take care of it, so get your plan going, and we'll get somebody to help us make it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any response to audience presentations from anyone? You have a response?
You know, several board members had conversations about the, we appreciate the correspondence on the Safe Haven Resolution. I would say that, you know, as a public body and certainly one that governs our public schools, you know, our foremost concern is about protecting our kids, and so we share many of the aspirations of what you've embodied in your resolution and the movement in general. But I guess our, in addition, our, you know, the power that we have to ensure that we see those things through is really through our policies. And so what the board has talked about and is willing to commit to today is that we will go ahead and take your resolution and look at it in the context of the policies we have today to ensure that we have the proper coverage and safeguards for our kids and our families that is deserving in the law and in our intents of running a public school district. I don't think any kid should ever come to school or not come to school because of fear of whether or not their parents are going to be there when they get home, or that they might get called out at school for their immigration status. So we appreciate you raising this issue and doing so professionally and publicly, and we'll do our best to capture the spirit of it and embed it in what we do.
Because Mr. Adler is right. We do have some students who are fearful, so.
Thank you. Mr. Wadler? Sorry, did you have something, sir?
I was just going to follow up. I just appreciate the sentiment of the board. Basically, what we're looking at doing is drafting basically a policy that may be as strong, if not stronger, than your resolution. So that, I just want to thank the board for their leadership on that, and there is a commitment from us to make every kid safe here in Peoria Public Schools. I like to call myself.
For some of us, this issue is a personal one. There are at least three of us that I know of on this board who are either immigrants or the children of immigrants. I remember a story, I'm going to try to be brief about this, but I remember a story of a woman, a single woman from Mexico, and she had two children, and she was fleeing domestic violence, exactly the sort of person the current administration would seek to prevent from coming into the United States, because of course, they're not the right kind of citizen. However, this person persevered and actually did make it here, you'd be pleased to know. I'm sorry if I get a little emotional here. Because you see, if she hadn't made it, I wouldn't be here. Nor would there be my brothers and sisters, attorneys, vice presidents, a pretty damn good auto mechanic. None of us would be here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I just want to say that they've captured all that I was going to say, in addition to, we're always trying to look out for our students, students that have been in the Children and Family Services arena, children that have, you know, in that arena, been removed from home and that, and then have caseworkers. We need to look at all that, and children that have been in the criminal justice system and having people who come to see them at school, so we need to really, we have some information that now, but we'll be looking at all of that and trying to make sure that all of our children are safe and feel safe in our schools. Thank you. Any other response? Okay, under information items, we have evidence-based funding overview, and is that a PowerPoint? Okay, Ralph Grimm and Teresa Miss Ramos.
Yep, and I do have a quick introduction. I wanted to thank Dr. Grimm from Galesburg for being here. I know you have to drive back, what's that, a 45-minute drive? Thank you so much. Is Teresa here?
No, she's not.
No, she didn't make it? Okay, so on April 27, I was able to join other superintendents from central Illinois. We went to Heartland Community College in Normal. We talked about fixing the formula. It was a town hall presentation. The event allowed superintendents from Unit 5, Morton, Leroy, Champaign to just get together and discuss our financial situation and share our stories, the media, and we had guests there. It was a conversation that allowed us to frame the need for a new funding formula in Illinois, and also to get an update on evidence-based funding model. I have worked with my colleagues across central Illinois to push our legislators to fix our formula. We've been doing it for the last two years, and actually, some of our board members have also been very, very involved with that. Thank you. So tonight, we asked Teresa Ramos and my peer, Mr. Grimm, Superintendent of Galesburg, to, because he loves this thing, and he's been doing it, he has the expertise in it. So I thank you, sir, for being patient, experienced, you know, I know you, and you're retiring this year, right?
I am.
So thank you so much for joining us today, and a special welcome to you for pushing the work and sharing, not only the board members, but our community, just giving us an update regarding evidence-based funding, this new proposed funding formula. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. As Dr. Krot said, I am a district superintendent. I've been a superintendent for 21 years. This is my 33rd year in education, and I will be retiring in June. I've chased funding for all 33 of those years, and it's somewhat frustrating to know that we're close, and we're hopeful that we'll get over the threshold with a new funding formula. Before I start, let me just say my compliments to all of you for an outstanding board meeting. It's certainly different sitting on this side of the table. I don't do that very often because I spend enough time on that side of the table, but the recognition of the students and staff, that's phenomenal. That's what we're all about, and my compliments to you for the way you have done that this evening. It's hopefully much appreciated, and it's very nice to see. Public education is doing their best work ever, right now. We're not failing, and there's evidence of that all around, so my compliments to all of you. I was asked tonight to come and speak about the evidence-based model. I have, I'm a stand-in tonight. There are people who have worked on this much more closely than I have. I've actually been a part of the Vision 2020 group the last several years, and my focus has been on the development and implementation of the new Illinois accountability model for schools and districts, but I have followed the evidence-based model fairly closely. So... So let me just make some general comments, and there's a short, two-and-a-half-minute video that's going to give you a pretty comprehensive overview of the evidence-based model, and then I'll talk a little bit more about how it works, and I'll be glad to answer any questions at the conclusion of my remarks. I think everyone knows, in terms of current reality, in Illinois today, a child's education is a function of the wealth in the community in which they live. The diversity of our needs among our students is rising significantly in the state of Illinois. We're seeing more low-income students, more ESL students, more special-need students. We have talented and gifted students that we need to focus our energy on. We have career and technical ed students that we need to get back to providing more for them. We have more needs now than we've had in many, many years. Research shows that low-income students need more resources to support their learning than their wealthier peers and not less. And we know that our low-income students are faced with larger class sizes, fewer special classes like art and music, outdated textbooks, and a lack of technology. The way we fund K-12 education in Illinois is upside down. For every dollar Illinois spends on non-low-income students, the state spends only 81 cents on a low-income student, ranking Illinois worst in the nation in providing resources for our low-income students. The current school funding formula is neither equitable nor adequate, and you'll see on the screen a couple of working definitions for equity and adequacy. In terms of equity, it's the responsibility of the state to ensure that every school district receives sufficient funding from a combination of sources to provide a program of instruction where every child, 100% of our students, has the access and support to achieve a high-quality education. In terms of adequacy, we want the level of funding to be sufficient for every child in a school district to have access to a high-quality education that provides meaningful opportunities to learn. Go ahead and hit them all, Chris. When you look at these three boxes, we can think of them as resources provided for education. The current funding formula is regressive, meaning that, on average, we spend more on educating our wealthier students than we spend on educating our low-income students. Put another way, we provide the students who have the greatest needs with the fewest resources. This leaves them unable to see over that fence to meet the rigorous learning standards we believe all students are capable of meeting if we provide them with the resources they need. Providing equal amounts of funding to all students would still not be sufficient to solve this problem, as research shows it costs more to provide the services needed to help diverse learners excel. What Illinois needs is an equitable funding formula, one that takes into account individual student needs and then takes that need into account when distributing state funding so the resources go where they are needed most. What's the problem? We spend the least on the kids who need it the most. These problems, which are inherent in the current funding formula, are exacerbated for every district in the state when the state does not pay their bills on time, as is the case for every school district in Illinois today. And that's the reality that we live in. The state's not paying their bills, local resources are being stretched to the max, and it's becoming harder and harder to provide the various resources that our students need in order to receive a high-quality education. Illinois' broken funding formula demands change this spring in this General Assembly. We've waited long enough, and having our students waited long enough. And I believe the answer to that is absolutely they have. So those who believe in the evidence-based model, believe that resources should exist in all schools so that conditions can exist to provide our students with highly competitive education, allowing them to experience success, that our investors deserve to know what their investment is purchasing. What a novel concept to think about tax dollars as an investment. But that's really what it is, ladies and gentlemen. Our tax dollars and the funding that goes into public schools is an investment. We believe that those in greatest need should receive the highest priority of our effort. Those districts in greatest need, those students in greatest need, should receive the highest priority for our efforts. Each district should have the autonomy to decide how to best invest in their students, and districts should be able to articulate the relationship between investment and execution. It's the idea of local control. Go ahead, Chris. Where school funding comes from, you can see on the chart, the U.S. average local resources account for about 45%, 46% from the state, and about 9% from the federal government. When you look at Illinois and compare that chart, you'll see that 2/3 of every dollar comes from the local sources, 26% from the state, and 8% from the federal government. And clearly, when the state's share is decreasing and diminishing, the burden on the local taxpayers becomes much, much greater. We believe there is a solution, and it's equitable and adequate. The evidence-based model recognizes individual student needs. It accounts for differences in local resources across the state, provides for a mechanism of distribution that puts resources in the districts of greatest need first while ensuring that no district shall lose a current level of state support on a per-pupil basis. And we'll explain that in a moment. Provides a sustainable and scalable model for investment in public education. It's important to note that in the evidence-based model, the current thinking is no district should lose money with this new funding formula. We have a video that's been developed by the Vision 2020 group, and it explains the evidence-based model, and I'd like to have Chris share that with you now. It's about two and a half minutes.
The Illinois school funding structure is currently both inequitable and inadequate. When the resources for education are based on zip code, all students are not given the opportunity to compete on an equal playing field. It is the responsibility of our state to ensure that conditions exist in every public school so that all students have access to a quality public education regardless of their geography. Investment in our children is critical for the social and economic well-being of our state. That's why it's time to change the formula. The evidence-based model for student success is a research-based framework with 27 elements that identify the necessary investment per student in order to provide a quality educational opportunity where every student has the chance to prepare for success in a career or in college. The evidence-based model establishes an adequacy target for each district based upon their unique student population and their geographic location in the state. To ensure that no district receives less state support as a result, a base funding minimum means the districts will not receive less state funds per pupil than was received the prior year, although this will be adjusted annually to accurately reflect current student enrollments. The result is no red numbers for any district, and investments in our districts with the greatest need first. The funding formula is designed to invest state resources so that schools can reach their unique adequacy target, giving all students an equal opportunity to a quality education. Then, the funds will be distributed through the funding tiers so we can ensure that all districts have the resources they need to succeed. Once the funds are allocated, a layer of local control and autonomy allows districts to decide what is best for their unique student body. This funding model is linked very well to the Illinois Balanced Accountability Model, which increases the level of transparency and communication. By tracking year to year, we can really see how many districts in our state have moved closer to adequacy, and we know what our investment has produced. Let's invest in our children.
Okay, looks like it paused. I think we're okay. It's got about three seconds left, so. So let me, that's a great video, and it captures the message of the evidence-based model, and Chris has the web address. I'll ask him to get that to you. I would encourage you to watch it several times, but here are some of the high points. As we've said, the current formula is both inequitable and it's inadequate. All students should have access to a quality public education regardless of their geography. Investment in our children is critical to the economic well-being of our state. The evidence-based model is a research-based framework with 27 elements that identify the necessary investment per student to provide a quality education for all students, to prepare them for success for a career or in college. The adequacy target that they talked about for each district is based on their unique student population and their geographic location in the state. To ensure base funding minimum means districts will not receive less state funds per pupil than was received in the prior year, although this will be adjusted annually to accurately reflect current student enrollment. So let's be clear when we talk about that particular point. If your enrollment is decreasing, your general state aid revenue may go down. Your per-pupil expenditures will more than likely remain the same, but that only makes sense if you have fewer students. It stands to reason that your allocation could go down. The current thinking is there will be no red numbers for any district. This is designed to assist all schools in reaching their unique adequacy target, giving all students access to a quality education. Funds will be distributed through funding tiers, giving districts the resources they need. Now, what makes this evidence-based model entirely different from our current funding model is the dollars will be distributed to those districts who need them the most first. Those districts that are wealthy, spending the most per student, will receive fewer of those dollars. There's a strong layer of local control and autonomy that allows districts to decide what is best for all of their students. All right. This slide gives you a quick overview of how the evidence-based model meets the requirements of an equitable funding system and ensures that no district loses funding on a per-pupil basis. The first step is to calculate the cost of the 27 essential elements, and I do have a slide toward the end that will show you the list of the 27 essential elements that are talked about. Those elements are research-based, and this model is being used in several other states. The second step, then, is to apply the elements to the individual district demographics, and then to determine the cost to provide the elements, and those costs are regionalized, it's not the word I want, but they're calculated on a regional basis because we know that in some parts of the state, it costs more to provide educational services, teachers' benefits, et cetera, than it does in other parts. And so we take that into account as we calculate the cost to provide these 27 research-based essential elements. Then, the district adequacy target is calculated. And if you want to go ahead and put it all up there, Chris, just keep going. I'll just talk over it. The evidence-based model has been used as the basis for the development of a potential solution to the problem of inequitable funding. The evidence-based model is used to calculate the cost of a high-quality education. The model has been used as a basis of funding models throughout the country, Wyoming, Arkansas, Texas, North Dakota, to name a few states. It provides the basis for the distribution methodology being developed in Illinois. And as you can see, the different districts up there all represent different types of needs in three fictitious districts throughout the state. The goal is to define the adequacy target. How much does it cost to provide a high-quality education? And we look at how well the district is funded currently. We look at the local capacity, the base funding minimum, and then there's the yellow box is the difference between what the local resources can provide compared to what that adequacy target is. And so you see there are three different districts represented up there. The adequacy target is different in each of the districts based on the district's local capacity, and in most cases, the wealth of the district, the base funding minimum that's needed, and then what's left is the gap to adequacy. And so what we're trying to do is close the gap to adequacy in those districts that have the largest gap first. The distribution formula is how the money will be distributed, and again, as you saw in the video, it'll be distributed through a tier system. So those schools in the tier with the largest gap will receive more of the dollars that are allocated. Those that have the smallest gap will receive the fewest dollars to be allocated. If you're aware of what's been going on throughout, in Springfield over the course of the last couple of weeks, you're probably aware that there are several different bills that are under consideration right now between the House and the Senate. And the folks at Fix the Formula have wanted me to make sure that I presented to you their thought process as they evaluate the bills to determine which one they believe will make the biggest impact in terms of funding reform, and you see that information up there. In an equitable system, the media students have higher adequacy targets than their wealthier peers and will receive a greater share of new funding. In an equitable system, property poor districts get enough state aid to close the adequacy gap created by varying levels of property wealth. And in an equitable system, the funding gaps are closed, on average, between low-income and non-low-income students and low and high-property wealth districts. On this slide, you see the list of the 27 essential elements that are a part of the evidence-based model, and I'll be glad to answer questions if I can about those, but these are all research-based things that have been shown to enhance the quality of a child's education in local school districts. There are some interesting things, if you dig into the research on the evidence-based model in terms of the effectiveness of some of the elements compared to some of the others. If you like numbers, or if you can't sleep at night, I encourage you to take a look at that part of the study on the website, and you'll learn an awful lot. What we would like to ask you to do, if you can support the concept of changing the formula, is certainly to support the evidence-based model. The formula we have now doesn't work. It's broke, it's ineffective, it doesn't do the job to meet the needs of the 2.1 million school students who attend public school in Illinois. So please become active, write or email your representative, senator, and the governor. We need this change, and we need it now. We need it this year. Our kids have waited long enough. Make a phone call to our local legislators urging them to fix the formula. There will be a rally in Springfield on May 17th. The Fix the Formula Group will be conducting a rally, and we encourage you to go down to the Capitol and participate. You can follow the movement on Facebook and Twitter, or you can contact me at my email address that you see there. This solution really needs to be bipartisan. When we're talking about kids, we're not talking about Republicans or Democrats, we're talking about kids. And that's what we want to keep in mind as we talk to our legislators. They don't vote, they don't profess loyalty to one political party or another, they're kids. And we have an obligation to provide them the highest quality education that we possibly can so that they can go out and be productive members of society that will help this state thrive and survive. And so I would encourage you, and I ask you on behalf of not just the kids in Peoria Public Schools, but the kids in Galesburg and surrounding areas, please, please, become active. Urge the General Assembly to pass the most equitable funding reform legislation that they possibly can, and get it done, and get it done now. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you for the PowerPoints that you provided to us.
Thanks for the PowerPoint that you provided to us earlier, and...
And I truly appreciate the strength and emphasis that you put on the inequity and the problem with that inequity. And I think what few people realize is how far-reaching that inequity is, and how the -- not just the challenges, but the negative things that that does over the long run are just enormous. And our good friend Samuel Betancis, who we've known over the years, has come to talk to us from time to time. He's a retired sociology professor from Northern, I believe. The inequity takes place inside a school via funding, but there's an equity that we can't control, or maybe we can control indirectly, and that inequity is the fact, just on the wealth gap between the rich and the poor in this country. And so that the resources that children who are themselves wealthy or well-to-do, outside of what they get in school, simply compounds what's happening inside the school. And if we don't do anything, we can't control that, or perhaps very little, but we can control this. That's what makes this so critical. So thank you so much for the information that you've given us.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Anyone else? Mr. Walther?
I wanted to thank Mr. Grimm for his presentation. We have a history. Mr. Grimm, a number of years ago, was the superintendent at Canton, and I was his bedeviled union representative at that time. And we worked together cooperatively, and we did interest-based bargaining, and had a very successful run at it and made it work. He's a man of his word. He's really committed to the kids. And he had a stubborn board, and I had a stubborn union, but we got together, and we made it work. And I appreciate you taking the time to come here and do this. I really appreciate this model, because there's more than a couple of us here on the board, that the evidence-based thing really helps. I mean, I think it argues against the politicizing of what goes on. You know, you've got evidence. You've got proof. You show that, and that isn't a Republican or Democrat issue. And so I just appreciate you taking the time to explain it. Thanks.
My pleasure. My pleasure. Again, I just, you know, these are kids, and we need to do this for them.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. You mentioned that there were more, there were several bills, several current bills. Do you have the bill number that currently represents, best represents this model?
I think Teresa's on the phone. Teresa, can you answer that?
Was it a question of the bill number?
Yes. Which bill are we most ready to back currently?
Sure. So, hi, everyone. And I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Thank you, Mr. Grimm, for a great presentation. So the House bill is HB 2808.
That's what I thought it was.
It is identical to Senate Bill 1, Senate Amendment 3, and Senate Amendment 4, sitting in Senate Committee. It is very close to a bill sponsored by Senator Barakman from Bloomington called Senate Bill 1124. There are a few key differences. There's a lot to like in Senate Bill 1124, but the reason, and a lot that we hope eventually makes it into any amendment to other bills. But Senate Bill 1, Senate Amendment 3, and House Bill 2808 make sure that no districts lose dollars and have a do-better-by-an-equity measure. We just see equity, a few parts of the language, make sure that adequacy targets are higher for the media districts, which shows that the gap really to fair funding is greater and puts them really kind of first in line to receive the greatest share of new money. And so that's why we're supportive of House Bill 2808 and Senate Bill 1, Senate Amendment 3. The House bill also did, for the first time in several years, and I appreciate how much Peoria has been a champion of this issue. Lots of community groups and the public schools did pass out of House Education Appropriations with bipartisan support just at the end of March, which is a big deal that hasn't happened in several years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for Mr. Adler?
So, thanks, Mr. Grimm, for the presentation. And Teresa, someday you and I, we're going to be in the same place at the same time, and I'll actually know what you look like. But, so, I'm in violent support of the evidence-based model, and I think we all appreciate that it would benefit Peoria Public Schools enormously. I will, however, play a little bit of devil's advocate. The notion that we hold all districts harmless, I mean, I 100% understand why that's a critical provision in order to try and get it passed. I also understand why it's a critical provision that prevents new money to be -- because it requires new money, new revenue, of which the state hasn't seen any for a long time, in order to get one more dollar into a more equitable model. And that gives me a lot of concern. So I don't know if there's any way to answer that, but there it is.
Yeah, it's like, where's the money coming from?
I'm having a comment, but I'll just -- what else? If you want to comment, feel free to.
You go first.
Okay. So, the Funding Only Future Campaign has been going after Fix the Formula for a long time. That initial graph, I think, in the slides about the U.S. average for state contribution versus Illinois, you see how small that contribution is for Illinois' share. So we definitely need to invest more dollars than we are, a lot more dollars. But within that $26, we know that the way that we've been distributing that money has been inequitable, giving, you know, little pieces here and there, just hasn't gone out in the most both efficient and equitable way possible. And for several years, we tried to support revenue-neutral legislation at first, that would have just made the little state dollars we had go out more equitably and efficiently, and it just wasn't politically a viable option. We ran against lots of opposition. We don't want any district to lose money. We do want to see a greater investment. And what that did, even though we weren't successful in our attempts to fix the formula on revenue-neutral terms, because we were worried about the appetite for putting in new dollars into the system, it did bring a whole bunch of new districts into the fold, you know, around really having a meaningful discussion about what our system should be doing. And that's why I think we've ended up in such a good space around the evidence-based model that'll allow us to, for the first time ever, have an adequacy target and ask what we will be spending. And then it'll tell us if there are districts that are over adequacy and force a lot of local conversations. You know, I think, what, how much is happening locally? How much are we getting from the state? Should that be the case? You know, we're a local control state, every piece of it, and so this will help drive, I think, better conversations. I don't disagree that, you know, the little money that we have, we should be spending more equitably. We have seen, over the course of a few years, both the governor, the speaker, and the Senate President want to put more money into education. We've seen a little bit more each year in the budget. The challenge has been, as you know from Peoria, it's like having a budget on paper but not having enough money in your account to pay it all right away, that we're not, we're down, you know, our kind of line items for mandated categoricals, so districts are owed sometimes tens of millions of dollars. And so, you know, I hope that, I think, the recent push by lots of superintendents to push for a budget alongside Fix the Formula will help, will help kind of get us there. But I think even just substantively on this issue, we'll get a win. One day, we have to believe, we will have a budget, and we'll put, we'll invest not just more, but an equitable share more into public education, and this gives us the right system. And I think calling our electeds to urge that they do more this year has shown to move the needle incrementally over the last two years, and I'm hoping we push it over the finish line this year. So that's the best answer that I can offer you on how that's worked out over the last few years and why we're at where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Way down here. Okay. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Willis? Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Did you want him?
No, I was just going to thank him first.
Okay. No questions? All right. Reported request under the Freedom of Information and Status of Such Request.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on April 24th, we've received four requests. Of those requests, one was filled. There was no pending request noted on April 24th board report. And to date, we have received 20 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $6,452.20. So it seems like we still have three outstanding.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, Vice President Adler?
Thank you, President Ross. The consent agenda for this evening consists of the following 12 items. Item number one is gifts to the school district. This meeting, $300. A year-to-date, $203,218.13. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is the payment for travel. Item four is a human resources report. Item five is the field trip approval for Von Steuben eighth-grade class trip. Item six is exterior doors for Franklin and Treewind. Item number seven is exterior doors for Keller and Von Steuben. Item eight is tuck-pointing. Item number nine is an intergovernmental agreement with Perfect. Item number 10 is the approval of selected vendors for E-Rate 2017-2018 contracts. Item 11 is the Peoria Stadium Plan. And item number 12 is the administrative contract approval. And that is the totality of the consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any items that any board member would like to pull for a separate vote? Mr. Walther, number?
Number 12.
12. Okay. May I have a motion and a second for all items except number 12?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion on any of the items except for number 12?
On behalf of the Buildings Committee, I'd just like to thank the administration and Dr. Crowe for all the hard work and collaboration, reaching out to the community on future plans for the Peoria Stadium, and we look forward to a detailed presentation coming back to the board here at a later date.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on all items except number 12? Would you please call the -- oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson?
Two things. Before we vote on this, I think that the board needs to thank Board Member Adler for all the work he did regarding the Peoria Stadium. And I know he had a lot of comments from me, because I wanted to make sure we don't sell that stadium, that we can keep it and fix it up. But he did such a good job on that, and I just want to personally thank him for at least stepping out there and pulling things together. So thank you, Board Member Adler.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I know I didn't pull these off, but I want to make sure all the EEO information is in, and we know what the workforce of those companies are that we'll be voting on tonight, and to make sure they're following the laws regarding the EEO area.
Both companies have minority and female participation.
Thank you.
Also want to mention, I believe, Mr. Walther was part of that building committee that worked with you as well. So there are two people that are usually doing committees. Thank you.
Didn't know who was on it.
Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Davidson Navilas?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Motion carried.
Item number 12, Mr. Walther?
Yeah, item number 12. There are some personal reasons that I won't discuss here in public about this, but I do think that--
First, may I get a motion in a second? Maybe we'll have discussion.
My motion is that we delay voting on this till the next board meeting.
This isn't -- I'm sorry.
You got a second?
Okay, that's -- the motion is on the table already here, so you want to -- what is it you're looking to?
I'd like to delay the vote on this till the next board meeting.
I don't think you're asking to table, or are you asking to suspend? What are you asking to do?
Well, if it's tabled, it's delaying till the next board meeting.
Well, no, tabling, you have to deal with it at the same meeting. Otherwise, it's a dead issue later. So are you postponing the vote or asking to postpone the vote?
If that's the language you need, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Then you'll need a second, and then there's a majority vote.
Why second?
Okay. Now, the--
Was that tabled or just motion to postpone?
Postpone.
Okay.
Motion to postpone. And we have a first, we have a motion and a second, and it takes a majority vote to postpone it or go with the current motion. Would you call the roll?
We don't have discussion.
You're voting to.
If the motion to postpone is delayed, then there's a second, then there needs to be a motion and a second to approve the item.
Okay. So say that again, because I do--
The motion of voting, I know, is whether or not to postpone. If you vote yes on this motion, it's postponed. If you vote no on this motion, then there needs to be another motion to approve the act.
And Mr. Rickberg, we have the ability to debate on a motion to postpone?
Technically, no. A motion to table is meant to be disposed of quickly, one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you.
So what motion will we do to get the vote?
This is, he said, if you vote yes--
If you vote yes on this motion, it's postponed till the next meeting.
If you vote no, we go back to the original motion. Would you call the roll?
Motion to postpone. Dr. Davidson Navilas?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Nay.
Mr. Shaw?
Nay.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mrs. Kastick?
Nay.
Mrs. Jackson?
Nay.
Mrs. Ross?
Nay.
Two ayes, five nays. Motion failed.
Motion fails. And back to our original motion.
No, no, there needs to be a motion to--
I move that we adopt item 12, the administrative contract approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hold on. Okay.
Dr. Davidson Navilas?
I'm sorry. Did I hear any discussion?
No. I asked, was there any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay. The contract supporting this motion, let me see if I can find mine. The administrative contract approval, item 12, that we're voting on, the contracts for that were provided to me just a couple of hours ago. Inasmuch, it is not my practice to approve any contract with which I am unfamiliar, I believe it would be improvement for me to vote to approve this. Secondly, I have a question. What is the mean number of years that these persons have served the district? Well, excluding the highest and the lowest, what's the mean number of years that these persons have served the district? One, two years, three years?
This doesn't have anything to do with mean number of years. This has to do with identifying talented individuals who are hard to fill, in positions that are hard to fill, and you snatch them up, and you give them a contract, so we wouldn't have to be doing this every year.
Well, so the question I pose is that one presumes that these are educators, and that common practice among educators is that they spend a couple of years to gain their tenure, you get to know who they are, at which point, they have earned a different type of contract that allows them to be more permanent. I see no reason why this is not a parallel issue, which is why I asked for the numbers. As far as the talent is concerned, I make no assumptions about that. I make no assumptions about that. It's simply a matter of process and procedure. If we're do one for one, we do one for the other. In addition, the contract piece alone is enough for me to say no, because I just don't know what's in there. I did manage to quickly, in closed session, read through them and found an item, actually, that might not be in the best interest of the administrators, but it was in only one contract, but I don't know if it's in all of the contracts, wherein an administrator could be removed and at will, and placed in another job at the same salary. Ostensibly, that means that that person could be put in, one would think, any job that might be available, or that somebody might want to put them in, that was simply not their job. I don't know that that codicil, or that that is necessarily in the best interest of the people, or the person, not these people. By the way, let me very quickly say that this is not about the people involved. This is about that hypothetical person who might have a job. Am I pretty clear on that one?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
And these are senior-level individuals, individuals who are in positions that are classified as senior-level?
Yes.
Officials. And that specific piece that you mentioned, it also protects the district, because when I came in, right, when I came in as superintendent, we had individuals who needed to be placed in other positions. And so this piece, actually, these, these contracts are pretty normal contracts, that this is, this is nothing new for the district. These are contracts that we've used. Mr. Redberg, actually, is wrapping up on a three-year contract. This is absolutely normal for individual superintendents to come in, you identify individuals, you check them out for a year, and sometimes folks just give them a three-year contract. And I believe in my team, and I do not want to spend another year trying to identify, these individuals are talented, they can go anywhere, right? On any given day, we're getting, we're getting offers for other employment in other places.
Well, that might be the case, and, and, and my opinion is that one year is just enough time for me to get to know you, not before I decide to make a three-year commitment on you. That being said, the other part is that, in the unlikely event, although it has happened in the past in this district, in the unlikely event that a senior administrator should choose to move on or to be removed, then it comes the concept of buying out that contract. And again, based on a single years, and this is not about the people involved, I want to be absolutely clear about that, again. It's that without that period, that prior period of, for lack of a better term, getting to know you, in addition to the fact that, you will please forgive my naive take, however, I don't believe that my ignorance of the contract should be reason for me not to have concern. The idea that, that part of that contract might, somewhere down the road, have to be bought out, as has happened in the past, is something that I think about. So, without additional structures, in terms of perhaps having a few years under your belt, having something that, a rubric that we have with performance under those few years, that will allow us then to engage in a, in a longer contract, I think this prudent makes sense. Even in the face of our hair being on fire, thinking that we're going to get, we're going to lose very talented people, I tend, when folks talk to me about, well, if we don't do this right now, we're really going to lose, I find that oftentimes, that tends to be the feeling of the moment, perhaps, but not necessarily with the actual reality of this, or the other matter of the unions. And so that's the reasons I have my questions about this.
Thank you. With that, anything else? All right. I believe Mr. Walter had your hand up.
I have two points I'd like to give. One is, there was a request made from a number of the unions to meet with the superintendent before this was voted on and approved. That's one of the reasons I, I will vote against this. The second one is that, and I understand the argument of trying to keep valuable people here, but if you take a look at the titles, one of them is, is the Director of Research and Accountability, and the only reason I bring that one up is he's, he's a director. There are other directors that are here at this district that I find are invaluable. And so my concern is, you know, you're going to have a director working next to a director, but this director, who's been here less than a year, is now going to guarantee three-year contract, and we have other directors who have put in 20, 30 years here, that are not part of the team. That's a concern for me, because I think that, that is just built-in dissension when you're doing that. So if you're going to follow your own arguments about the invaluable people, and, and we're going to go with this three-year thing, I think I would rather look at expanding the number of people that are in here through that. So those are my two points for the night.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Davidson Avilas?
No.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Oh, no.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, motion carry.
Thank you. Deliberation agenda, expulsions. Ms. Jackson?
That expulsion listed on the report dated May 8, 2017, be approved as presented?
Second.
Dr. Davidson Avilas?
Aye, stand.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic? Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain, motion carry.
That the expulsion, with the expulsion held in abeyance, listed on the report dated May 8, 2017, be approved as presented?
Dr. Davidson Avil-
Second.
Dr. Davidson Avilas?
Inasmuch as we're not having conversations about this, is it okay for me just to say, because I was not there to see all the data, that's why I'm abstaining? So my vote is to abstain.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain, motion carry.
Revocation of expulsion held in abeyance, that the revocation of expulsion held in abeyance, listed on the report dated May 8, 2017, be approved as presented?
Second.
Dr. Davidson Avilas?
Aye, stand.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain, motion carry.
That the revocation of board probation, listed on the report dated May 8, 2017, be approved as presented?
Second.
Dr. Davidson Avilas?
Aye, stand.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain, motion carry.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, that on Fridays, is it Thursday or Friday, when our administrative assistant puts all the information up on the web, our packet, it includes all of the discipline information as well.
And as much as I wasn't there to get the input, very valued input, contextual information, that oftentimes is not carried in those reports, I thought it fair to everyone to improve it.
Because I know you were supposed to be in that meeting, and you were not able to be there, so that's great. I was just letting people know that they can pull it up and look at the student information and all the discipline information over the weekend if they choose to. Presentations and suggestions by board members.
I have a presentation. Well, not presentation, but a suggestion, comment, actually. We take action and fix the formula. Are those folks on? Or are they? They left. They hightailed.
It's a drive to Yale's word.
And I would be too. Must be exhausted. Wasn't that video created? It was able to, right? And it was able to convey complex ideas in a fashion that even I could get. And the thought occurred to me that when that was happening, that the reason that arm was able to move the way it moved, is that it was taught by an art teacher. And I have to say that nobody has more admiration for art teachers than I do, and we have a very good example, not just in that video, but also in the graphics that were, that were in, again, to give us complicated information in a simple, understandable way. I sometimes think we underestimate the impact that the arts, in particular the visual arts, have on our reality, on our appreciation of the world. And I, for one, have ever knowingly not supported our art teachers, and because of something that I have the power that they're able to do through their teaching. So I was thrilled to see that, and it just made such an impact on me about how talented that person was.
Thank you. Any presentations or suggestions by board members, any others? All right. Ms. Bates?
I believe that if I checked the schedule correctly, that this will be my last board meeting until we all join back together on June 12th. So I just want to say thank you to Dr. Karat and the board for allowing me to have this opportunity. It's been a great experience. I experienced a lot of things I never thought that I could do, the being, sitting up here being one. So, thanks again, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where are you going to school, Ms. Bates?
Where are you? I was just going to ask. I'm going to school at the University of Missouri in Columbia, known as Mizzou. I plan to study athletic training first and get my doctorate in physical therapy.
Wonderful.
So we enjoyed having you.
So you will be back at the June 12th meeting, you say?
Yeah.
Okay, good. We'll probably, properly say, so long, then.
Can I, can I just, very briefly, as an academic, I'm, I know about Mizzou. You be careful. Do you guys know the reputation for a party school like that?
I thought it was S-I-U-E.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. And all of you all, you've done a great job. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
Mr. Walters?
Oh, Mr. Walter, sorry.
Just one comment. We have a member of the press who broke a lot of hearts this week, because recently she got married, Tanya Coontz. Congratulations on that, and appreciate your coverage with the happy wedding.
She should have made some hearts happy. Tanya and I go back a long way, don't we, Tanya? All right. Congratulations to you. Anything else for the good of the public meeting?
The Buildings Committee will meet on Wednesday at 8:30 in the media room. We have an agenda that doesn't include the stadium.
Finally. Mr. Shaw?
Yes, the Policy Committee will meet next Wednesday, May 17th, at 9:30 a.m. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
President Ross, I move that we adjourn.
Second.